Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Kinnon, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
Here. First order of business.
The minutes of the meeting of May 19th and May 26th.
On Counselor Christensen's motion to approve, all those in favor? All those opposed? Minutes are approved.
Dear members of the council, under the provisions of law, I hereby appoint Robert A. Johnson of 154 Clifton Street, Malden, Massachusetts, as a constable to serve process in the city of Malden effective May 18, 2009. Said term to expire May 18, 2010. Very truly yours, Richard C. Howard, Mayor. Confirmation is not required.
On Counselor Paul DePietro's motion to place on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is placed on file.
Dear members of the council, pursuant to the provisions of law, I hereby reappoint Michael Durante of 9 Fielding Street, Malden, as a member of the Resident Employment Monitoring Committee. Said term to expire September 24, 2010. William Harley of 67 Kimball Street, said term to expire September 24, 2009. Mr. Harley will fill one of the vacant positions. Francis Boudreaux of 48 Essex Street, said term to expire September 24, 2010. Mr. Boudreaux will replace Theresa Lowensberry on the committee. Very truly yours, Richard C. Howard, Mayor. Confirmation is not required.
On Counselor Jim Nester's motion to place on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Items are placed on file.
Application for license to drive a taxi cab, Kimberly Curms, 112 Jefferson Ave., Everett.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to license.
Application for amusement machine licenses, GLS Associates, 15 Holden Street, six machines.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Items are referred to license.
Application for pool table licenses, engine order of Hibernians, 259 Charles Street, one table. Honey Fitz, 142 Pleasant Street, two tables.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed? Items are referred to license. Moving on to communications.
Dear members of the council, please be advised that in response to the City Council paper which was forwarded to this office, the Malden Redevelopment Authority secured a proposal from Meridian Associates of Beverly. The proposal which was accepted by the Malden Redevelopment Authority Board and authorized for action was to study the feasibility of utilizing public buildings for energy efficient and eco-friendly power generation. We will also look at the potential of revenue production possibilities from these sources. I will advise you when the report is finalized. Sincerely, Stephen M. Woschowski, Executive Director, Malden Redevelopment Authority.
On Counselor Paul Anderson's motion to place on file, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is placed on file.
The claim of Quanconse, 43 Concord Street.
On Counselor Greg Lucy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is referred to finance. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred the matter of appointments to the Resident Employment Monitoring Committee, having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends that the following be appointed. Percy Starworth, 107 Bowden Street. Edwin Casalotta, 24 Andrews Street. Counselor Kinnon for the committee.
On Counselor Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Kinnon?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I do have a mic there where it's very good. I just want to say that the committee met with a number of candidates and settled on these two, which are very qualified individuals, and just want to move it forward.
Any questions for Counselor Kinnon? On Counselor Kinnon's motion to appoint, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson, Paul Anderson, Bucci, Christensen, Condon, DePietro, Furlong, Kinnon, Lucy, Nester, Spatafora.
Yes. Congratulations. Next order of business.
The Standing Committee on Ordinance, to whom was referred Paper Number 151, Series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Be it ordained that Section 6.45 of the revised ordinance of 1991 be amended regarding the Class II dealer's ordinance. Committee recommends that this paper be reported out favorably with the following amendment: That everything after the enacted clause be stricken and the following inserted in place thereof. By striking out Section 6.45E, Paragraph 3, and inserting in place thereof the following new Paragraph 3. A license issued under the provisions of this section may be transferred to a different location with the approval of the City Council License Committee. Provided that any license transferred to a residential location shall be valid for a period not to exceed 90 days and shall prohibit storage of vehicles on site. Any license not transferred from a residential location within the time specified by the License Committee shall be void and all rights accrued under the terms of this section shall be extinguished. Counselor Kinnon for the committee.
On Counselor Kinnon's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Kinnon? So you want to make a motion?
Make a motion, yes.
On Counselor Kinnon's motion to amend in accordance with the committee, Counselor Bucci? Do you mind holding the motion, Counselor?
No problem.
Counselor Bucci? You're on, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was just a matter for discussionary purposes. Karen, if you could just reiterate the language around the residential neighborhood timeframe again, because I think, again, my best understanding of this current ordinance is that it was implemented and designed to maintain that such licenses were not allowed in residential areas. I understand the good work that the committee has done to tighten up that language and to make sure that there's no storage of vehicles, but I just wanted, for the public's purpose, to know that there are some specific languages and timeframes around this particular ordinance. So would you mind just rereading that again?
Yeah.
Specific to that part of the ordinance, Karen?
Provided that any license transferred to a residential location shall be valid for a period not to exceed 90 days and shall prohibit storage of vehicles on site.
Okay. And if at the end of that 90 days, they cannot transfer that license to a comparable or another commercial space, then my understanding is that that particular license would be expired and canceled?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, Counselor? Counselor Condon?
Yeah, we, right now, we have Class II dealer licenses located in residential. Correct? Now, if someone has, is in this situation and they're in a residential location, doesn't allow them to go back into, say, they go out of business on Whitman Street, they go out of business and then maybe the property falls through, it will not allow them to go back into a residential business with this Class II license, correct?
That is my understanding. Forty? You'll allow them to go there for 90 days?
Counselor Anderson, hold on one second.
It will allow them to transfer their Class II license to their residential home. However, just because at one time they were in a residential area grandfathered in, they wouldn't be allowed to even be considered a Class II license in a residential area, correct?
Correct.
Give your mic, Sean.
Yeah, thank you. We can allow the sponsor of the paper to speak on it, but it's my understanding that what we're talking about is some of these licenses that were grandfathered that are in residential areas, licenses that otherwise wouldn't be granted today. In the case of some of those license holders that may have their situation changed, their tenancy terminated, the building sold, what have you, instead of that license just expiring at that point, we're allowing those persons 90 days to be able to maintain the license in a residential location. There'll be no vehicles parked there, there'll be no business transmitted there, but the idea is that those license holders can still operate by going to the auction and those kind of things. They have 90 days in which to find another location, another location that's suitable and a location that'll be approved by the License Committee. So there is no intent for those licenses to operate in a residential area longer than 90 days, and while they are in the residential area, it'll strictly be a paper holding situation, but no vehicles there, no storage there, no business being transacted there, just a paper holding.
So if we monitor it and we find that there's a car there without a plate, we can yank it?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Anderson, Counselor Bucci, you all set? Counselor Condon? So we're going to make a motion on Counselor Kinnon, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. On Counselor Kinnon's motion to amend in accordance with the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? On Counselor Kinnon's motion to enroll, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson, Bucci, Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes. Next order of business.
Counselor Neil Anderson?
Yes.
Paul Anderson?
Yes.
Bucci?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
DePietro?
Yes.
Furlong?
Yes.
Kinnon?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
Nester?
Yes.
Spatafora?
Yes. Next order of business. Adam Clark?
The Standing Committee on License, to whom was referred Paper Number 147, Series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Application for license, delivery license, Kenneth Arthur DeLong Jr., 52 Francis Street. Committee recommends that this license be granted. Counselor Anderson for the committee.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor Anderson for the committee. On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Next order of business.
Standing Committee on License, to whom was referred Papers Number 172A and C, Series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Application for renewal of Roaming House licenses, Rutherford Lawrence French, 98 Waller Street, Elaine Vrally, 116 Cedar Street. Committee recommends that these licenses be granted. Counselor Anderson for the committee.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted.
The Standing Committee on License, to whom was referred Paper Number 198, Series of 2009, having considered the same, make the following report. Application for amusement machine license, Italian American Citizens Club, 121 Pearl Street. Committee recommends that this license be granted. Counselor Anderson for the committee.
On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On Counselor Neil Anderson's motion to grant, all those in favor? All those opposed? License is granted. Next order of business.
Under suspension of docket rules resolved, it is the sense of the City Council that the mayor bond for the purposes of purchasing a pump truck for the fire department and upgrading of the high-frequency communication system. Counselors Furlong, Condon, Paul Anderson, and Bucci.
On Counselor John Furlong's motion to suspend docket rules, all those in favor? Aye. Rules are suspended. Counselor Furlong?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I get through speaking on this, anybody else that's outside the committee that would like to join on that resolve, please do so. We've had this discussion since January, sometimes before that, about the decay of some of our fire apparatus in the city along with our communications system for the protection of the firefighters or to enable them to communicate on a high frequency when they're on mutual aids. So we sat and we've discussed it numerous times, we've gone around the table, we've discussed using a 108 loan, we've discussed borrowing the money, but it's come time for us to at least start the process on getting at least one piece of apparatus in the city. As much as last week there were three pieces of apparatus down as of last week on one given day. What we've asked the chief to do outside of this paper, once this resolve is passed, which I hope it passes, I'm sure it will, is to put together a plan going forward on how we're, a replacement program on what we're going to do over the next 20 years, because we can't go any longer in the city where we have two pieces of apparatus that are over 20 years old to protect 56,000 people in the city. So with this resolve, we're asking the mayor to either, we either use the 108 money or we go out and we borrow the money for a new piece of apparatus, pump truck, and as well as updating the communication system to protect the firefighters on mutual aids outside the city. So that's the resolve. And if any other counsel wants to join in on it, please do so, and I'd also like to thank the councils that sat on the Public Safety Committee with me, everybody. We've heard the same story since January, and there's been great dialogue and input as well as with Frank Vaca and Don Famano giving us information on the availability of money. So thank you all, and I'd like to see this resolve pass. Honestly, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Furlong. Well done. Any lights? Counselor Christensen?
Yeah, thank you, and I know the speaker's done a lot of work in this area. Just want to ask him through you, Mr. President, the resolve is a wish of the council, it goes up to the mayor, then the mayor would formally have to send something down where the Finance Committee and the entire council would look at the implications of the cost in 20 years out and the other items that you mentioned, and then it would be reported out by the full council and up to the mayor for signature? Is that how you foresee the process happening?
And I've spoken with him, actually, tonight when I left here.
Okay.
So he's fully aware of it, and he understands, he knows that there's something that has to be done now, obviously, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? On Counselor John Furlong's, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bucci. Counselor Bucci?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too want to just echo what Counselor Furlong has stated. I think that the discussion was unanimous in the committee work tonight as well as it has been all along in terms of, you know, the plan. You know, my favorite four-letter word is the plan, and I think that we certainly have the necessity to start addressing it. It is not the right fiscal time to be thinking that you need to find, you know, a half a million or $600,000, but there's not going to be a good time in what we think is happening from a fiscal perspective. But there needs to be a strategic approach to start to address these, this particular important item. So again, I just want to make sure folks are aware that I certainly support this particular resolve, and I look forward to hearing back from the mayor as well as the Malden Fire Department on this.
Thank you, Counselor Bucci. Counselor John Furlong?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the people under the fire department that have come up here every week to give us some information, Deputy Bob Angelo, Chief Murphy, Deputy Sullivan, and also Deputy Finn, that have come up here and basically given us an overview of what's really going on at the fire department and how depleted some of the equipment is, so I'd like to thank them for their time also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Furlong. Counselor Paul Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to echo the sentiment of the chair and the other members of the committee, but more importantly, I want to thank the chair for being a bulldog on this issue since I've been here since January, and he has just not let it drop. He's been constantly calling these meetings, constantly trying to find the resolve, and I want to thank him. As a former firefighter, I know how hard and difficult it is to get somebody supportive of you under difficult times. He's just been outstanding chairman to the cause, and because he sees the need and he knows the need, and I echo the sentiments of the full committee, and I hope the full committee council will support this paper. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Well said. Counselor Neil K?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too support this. I just would like to ask a question of the sponsor, if possible.
Sure.
And that is, could you tell us what the ages, we're talking about, first of all, about getting a new pump here, and the ages, I think it's important for the citizens to understand of the existing, and if I'm putting you on the spot here, I apologize, but I think the last pump we got was last year, but the others are significantly older.
Counselor Furlong?
Thank you. I think one of them I rode in the Fourth of July parade when I was 12. No, I, two of them are over 20 years old. Two of them are over 20 years old. I think the next one, the newest one, maybe 2003? Don, would you have an idea on the, 2002? That's the newest piece of equipment that we have. Oh, two years old? Okay, so, all right, so 2007. But the other piece of equipment, you know, like I said, two of them are over 20 years old, and what we've had to do is borrow from other cities, as you know, and now it's getting to the fact that their pieces of apparatus are breaking down and the equipment's not out there, so, you know, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to get almost on like a 20-year plan, not a 20-year plan, but we're trying to, the chief recommended, you know, every four years replacing a piece of equipment, starting with the oldest, obviously, so it's almost like a 16- or 20-year cycle where you're going through, basically kind of what we're doing with the police department, something like that.
Yeah.
But he's going to put a capital improvement program together for us to see. That's going to be the next piece of this, so we just don't get the piece of apparatus, and then 15 years later, whoever's up here is talking about getting another piece of apparatus. So we're trying to put a to-go schedule, I guess you could call it, or a capital improvement schedule on how we're going to be able to replace these pieces of equipment, so. But I know that there's at least two that are over 20 years old, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Thank you.
You all set, Counselor?
I'm all set. Thank you.
And if I may, real brief, I know sometimes we've been talking about a tough year, I want to thank to the Public Safety Committee for continuing the fight to ask for funding for a new fire truck as well as new equipment. Well, it's going to definitely improve the response time as well as save some money on our maintenance that we've been spending a lot of money to keep these trucks running. I know they're running out of pots in some of these things because they don't make them anymore. I think more importantly, both these tools, because that's what essentially they are, will make the citizens of Malden much safer as well as the fire department, so I think though that shouldn't be overlooked. They'll be able to communicate better, and they'll be able to fight a fire with this equipment, so, well done. On Counselor Furlong's motion to pass, all those in favor? All those opposed? Item is passed. Next order of business. The docket is clear, and I'll go to my right for personal privilege. Anybody? Counselor Lucy?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Counselor President. I'd just like to inform the residents of Malden that I just received a phone call yesterday from New England Deaconess Associates, and they informed me that the project up at the old Malden Hospital site is officially terminated. They ran into the economic buzzsaw of the whole country here that we're all experiencing. I believe they had 50% of the units sold, but they still could not get financing, so they had to end their quest to do that, and they reverted the property back to Hallmark Health who owned the property originally. It's my intent to meet with them, along with the mayor and Hallmark Health, to ensure that the surrounding area and the neighborhoods are maintained and the safety of the citizens is upheld. The building that's still there, the old hospital, is partially demolished from the inside, and it does, I believe, pose a safety hazard, and I believe that we'll be meeting with them and we're going to try to find out what their plan is moving forward with the property, and rest assured that the neighbors and the residents of Malden will have input on what goes on up there. So I was deeply disappointed that the project did not go forward because of the hard work that was done by the council and the planning board, and a lot of effort, including New England Deaconess Associates who gave their best effort to make this project work, but it didn't go, so we're back to the drawing board. Now we have to just protect the neighborhood and do what we have to do to keep the residents safe. Thank you, Counselor President.
Thank you, Counselor DePietro. Counselor Greg Lucy? Oh, I thought it was your light, too, Counselor. Sorry. Counselor Gary Christian?
Thanks, Mr. President. I know you mentioned it last week, but we were televised tonight. We definitely want to make sure we recognize Megan Drummy, John Webster, for a job well done with the Memorial Day Parade, as well as Jim Cahill. We already have a few suggestions on how we're going to improve next year's parade, but I just wanted to make that public. I also want to thank Anthony Rodriguez, our financial team, Don Famano, Frank Vaca. The draft budget is on the city's website, on the homepage, so residents have an opportunity to go onto the website and get a glance of how the budget process is going beginning July 1st, so I want to thank the administration for getting that up quickly. Also want to recognize Bike to the Sea, the Charter School, Oak Grove Improvement Association, DPW, for a great cleanup on Saturday. We did the bike path down on Medford Street and Canal Street, and it went over very well. Heard a lot about those charter school students, and it's true, they did an awesome job. Also want to remind my council that my colleagues tomorrow night were having a fundraiser for the Bread of Life, so if anybody is going out to eat, the Darkside Restaurant, 6 to 9, 10% off, goes back to the organization. And then also, through Sheila Famano, she emailed you about the annual Flag Day ceremony that will be held Sunday, June 14th at 5:00 PM at Belrock Memorial Park on Main Street. My final point of personal privilege, Mr. President, is I know over the past several months, we've talked about going green, and I'm very happy to report to you tonight that we've had one counselor on this body step forward and make this goal a reality. Now, this counselor was very concerned recently about why we were receiving voluminous monthly building permit reports, and he asked who was responsible for this crazy situation, and someone remarked to him, "Oh, that was Counselor Christensen's idea." This counselor said, "I am not surprised whatsoever, but we need to have those reports emailed." And now I'm very happy to report to you, they are, beginning with the month of May. You should have received an email of those voluminous building permit reports. And so in recognition of the efforts of this Green Counsel, we have a citation, and it reads as follows, and it's actually on green paper.
Does it recycle?
Be it hereby known to all that the Malden City Council hereby extends its sincerest congratulations and best wishes to Paul Condon, Ward 2 City Council, as the recipient of this month's Malden Going Green Award. Paul's outrage that the building department was printing out the voluminous monthly building permit reports for each city councilor sprung the membership into action, and now the reports are being emailed to the city council. Paul's commitment to the environment has already resulted in the savior of a tree or two. Perhaps we should think about having Paul lead a standing committee to develop more green initiatives. Again, congratulations and thank you to this month's Malden Going Green Counselor, Ward 2 City Counselor, Paul Condon.
Thank you, Counselor, and I'm pleased to announce that the mayor has told me that I will be getting the trees that were supposed to go to Ward 1. Find something else to do with your life, please. This costs money.
It's last year's stock.
You all set, Counselor Christian? No more awards? Okay. Counselor Jim Nester?
Thank you. That's going to be a tough one to follow. I just wanted to thank Captain Emerald and the Malden Police. We've had some issues up in Waits Mount, some late-night partying going on there, and they've jumped right into action, and according to a lot of the neighbors, they've seen an immediate improvement. Speaking on Waits Mount, I'd like to thank everybody that came out for our cleanup on Saturday. We had a big crew of people, actually from all over the city, different wards who were in there, not just Ward 4 and 5. I'd like to thank in particular the DPW, Jeff Manship and Bobby Knox, the Oak Grove Improvement Association, the Mystic Valley Charter School students that showed up, and also the East Coast Soda Company, spent three hours trying to remove graffiti from the wall up there, so made a big improvement, and hopefully we can keep it clean for the summer, so. And the last piece, I just want to remind everyone that the deadline for the Features of Malden Artist Contest has been extended to June 12th, so if you haven't submitted a piece for that contest, please feel free to bring it up to the council office any day until next two weeks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Nester. Counselor, no the lights? Oh, sorry. Didn't come on, Counselor Anderson.
Well, let's continue with this going green. Couple of weeks ago, I told you that this woman, Elizabeth Scorsello, from my neighborhood, actually she's in Ward 5, but was concerned about the Lincoln Common where there's a lot of overgrowth around a beautiful, otherwise beautiful where there was a lot of overgrowth around a beautiful, otherwise beautiful rose bush, and she speared the action to get a bunch of people involved in coming out on Sunday morning, and that Oak Grove Improvement Association, who's been all over the city the last few days, was out, about five or six of those folks were out, along with Elizabeth and some of the others. Counselor Christensen was even there. I looked around, and this guy with casual clothes and one of those things that picks up extensions, what do they call, Gary?
Single.
It wasn't a pooper scooper, it was one of those...
Single with no kids, Counsel.
Yeah, you, I know my mother had, after she had her leg operated on, she had this thing that you would squeeze, and it would...
I think it was a gripper.
A gripper? Okay, it was a gripper, so. Counselor Christensen was out there with his gripper picking up things in the neighborhood. But anyway, it was nice to see people out, willing to roll up their sleeves, and not just asking the city to do everything for them, but willing on their own to pitch in and make a difference, and so thank you to those folks who were out, thank you to Elizabeth for getting it going, and we're going to keep this thing going green. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I may, from the chair, I want to remind all the councils and everybody watching that the Sunday, June 7th, is the Firefighter's Memorial. It will step off from the Central Fire Station at 10:00 AM, and they'll march to the Forestale Cemetery for the service, and then march back to Central after the Memorial Day service. So that is going to be again June 7th, it's a Sunday, it's a touching tribute, and it's going to kick off at 10:00 AM at the Central Fire Location. That is it. On Counselor Christensen's motion to adjourn, all those in... Oh!
Recession subject to the call of the chair was...
That's correct. That's right. On Counselor Christensen's motion to recess, by the subject, by the call of the chair, all those in favor? All those opposed? Councilors, a recess.